For Tuesday, May 27th, the holiday yesterday. Jordan appears to be gone. So Kathy, why don't you give us a roll call to start things off?
Please respond by stating present. Councilmember Ronane.
Present.
Folberg.
Present.
Leebout.
Lee, present.
Ward.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Nostrup.
Present.
Mayor Shoneman.
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. We had a typographical issue in our agenda this week. We had a copy and paste issue, it looks like. So item 7D is replica of 7C. It should actually be a very similar but different petition for a property located on 502 Melgarde Road, which is the home of the Journey Church, or former home of the Journey Church. So I would ask to take a motion for approval of the agenda with that modification. Second. I've got a motion from Councilman Nostrup, second, Councilman Ward. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. We had our previous meeting last Monday on May 19th. I would ask for a motion to approve those minutes. There also is an amendment to this to include the payroll items EFTPS for $176,440, the retirement system $107,510, and the health insurance of $88,150. And that was just an oversight from those integers in the proper place for the bills associated with the payroll. So I would take a motion to approve that, those minutes with that adjustment.
Move to approve with the adjustments noted.
Second motion, Councilman Johnson, second Councilman Ward. Does anyone else have anything to discuss about those minutes aside from that amendment? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have a couple of speakers signed up to talk to us here in our public open forum. I've got in the order Stan Hunstead and Joel Mann. Looks like you guys are here to talk about the same thing. Does one of you guys want to tackle it, or you guys want to go in sequence? All right, Stan, get up to that podium. Take a look at the little microphone. Make sure the green light is on so that we can hear you.
I just want to talk to you about a water issue. First of all, the developer breaching the dyke that they put in and directing water flow onto my private property, obviously giving me water issues on my property, and what needs to be done to fix that. And then also a manhole that's right behind Joel Mann's house, that when we get good rains, it's underwater. And then I'm getting water up my floor draining my basement, creating issues inside my house from their water drainage issue in that development that they're developing to the north of me.
And you're in the road that jets off to the east, just south of those, those new homes and that new development?
Correct. Right at the end of the cul-de-sac on the north side. 1716 Spear Street is my address.
Yeah, I've got that listed. I can distribute that. So issues, the developer broke the levee that caused some flooding, and then also there's a city manhole that needs some attention are the two primary issues. Have you spoke to anyone in the city about these issues?
Yes, I had spoke to Stuart Nelson.
Okay.
And I'm aware that a letter was sent out to the developer to fix these issues, and nothing has been done.
And about when did this take place, Stan? During the rains of last week, probably.
Two weeks ago.
Okay.
But it's not the first time this has happened. This all started like two years ago, and nothing's been done about it.
And you've had communication directly with the developer, or you just talked to us?
Stuart.
Okay. Sounds good. Is, Joel, do you have anything to add to that?
Just to verify that, you know, I live right next door to Stan. My property's right directly to the west. I'm fortunately a little bit, you know, upstream there, so it doesn't affect my property to the extent it does for him. But I just, I just want to be able to verify that what everything he's telling you is legitimate. I mean, he's not just some neighbor with an axe to grind it. This is all stuff that's been, is going on now and has been.
And it's gotten worse since that development started maneuvering water on it. And Stu, so we're aware of the issue.
Yep.
We've got some protocol in place to remediate the issue with the developer.
And Mr. Mayor, I've been there and taken pictures, and it's every bit as bad as he says it is. They say it is. It's not good.
So yes, we, in part, the reason that that berm that was cut through here a couple of weeks ago was built was to help protect the downstream properties. And there was supposed to be a culvert put in to allow water to drain out at a more reasonable rate. And that wasn't installed last year when they built the berm. So that's where part of the problem is coming in, is that it wasn't built the way it should have been in the first place.
Okay. All right. Well, these aren't normally, Stan, the type of things that we can solve right here and now, but it sounds like our appropriate folks here in the city are aware of the issue. We can talk with our legal counsel, make sure that we're taking the appropriate steps to get this thing fixed in a timely manner. And I've got a mailing address for you, but perhaps you could also jot down your email address and phone number. You don't have to shout it out or anything, but send that through so that we can, as we work to solve this issue, we can keep you in the loop on the thing.
That would be great.
Okay. Well, thanks for joining us. Anything else, Joel, on that issue?
Yeah, pretty much covered it. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Thanks for joining us here tonight. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, well, zip along to our consent calendar where we've got four items of routine city business. Here tonight, I would take a motion to approve our consent calendar. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Ward, second Ronane. Anyone have anything on any of these items? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. We tied up a lot of old business last meeting, so we have none to discuss here today, but we do have a series of new business items, the first of which is our possible approval of an encroachment license for a transition ramp. And it looks like that's right across from the market there, Ron, in a location that maybe has a bit of a step up to get in the front door.
Correct, correct, Mr. Mayor. And as the council knows, when, when people are requesting to put a ramp or some kind of obstruction into a right-of-way area where there'll be pedestrian traffic, we like to go through a more formal process where we have an agreement in place that identifies what their responsibilities are, and also identifies the ability to end that agreement if there's an issue or if we need them to take it out. So what I've prepared for the I revive sip and paint is a license agreement that allows for that transition ramp that you're seeing. What you're not seeing in the photo on there is the, is the railing that will be required. And then there'll also be some type of reflective tape or edging that'll be needed to be there for low-light conditions. But with that, we would ask that the council go ahead and approve that. I already have a signed copy of it from the, from the tenant. And because it's simply a tenant, we're not asking that the property owner, this is for the tenant's benefit as part of the retail premises. If the tenant leaves that and the next occupant no longer needs that transition ramp, then we'll have them remove it.
And Ron, so this is borne about by a requirement, or this was a voluntary action taken by that leasing because they believe that they would have people that would require that entrance?
I'm not sure what the circumstances are for wanting or needing the transition. Maybe Ken can come up with that.
Thanks, guys. It was a ADA requirement for the new business. Generally, we work with the owners to make as best of a solution as they can come up with. There's different examples throughout Main Street where they ramp the pavement. There's a metal ramp on one business. This is a similar situation.
And that's a super wide set of sidewalk there, so people should be able to get around their, on foot or on bicycles or anything?
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion from Councilman Ronane, a second from Councilman Ward. Does anyone from the council have any questions about this particular ramp or the process that we're undergoing here?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Just want to thank our, our community development director, as well as our economic development director. It's kind of fun. I stumbled across there when you guys were doing the inspection, along with the firefighters as well. It's really cool to see just all the different things that they're, they're looking at, inspecting, where the, over the top of my head, but it's really cool just to see them get involved with, with the business community and look out for everyone's safety and while still moving it forward. I think that was a really nice thing that, that the owners, they were, I think, a little bit nervous about, hey, are we going to be able to do this? Is this gonna, gonna stop us? But it's not. You guys did a really good job at showing them this is, you know, the way to get it approved. And so I thank you guys for doing that.
It's probably not even over your head. Don't sell yourself short.
Way over my head.
Bet you could understand, or in. All right. So we've got our motion. We've got our second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, possible approval to declare surplus bicycles for our police department. They were inventoried from the sheriff's department. Chief McNeil, would you walk us through what this, this action entails?
Yeah, thank you. So we have a request for some bicycles to be utilized with the Brown County Treatment Court. Agencies are liaisons to this, this treatment court. And what the sheriff's office representative is asking for are allowing us to take some of those bicycles that we have in our lost and found inventory and surplusing them to the court. So the clients can use those for transportation, and we recommend that that be done.
Move to approve.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, and a second from Councilman Nostrup. Pretty straightforward reaction. Bicycles, or surplus bicycles from time to time, as the police department seems to find quite a number of them. Does anyone have any questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate that. Next is the approval of our first reading of an ordinance to petition to rezone from C2 and R3 to entirely C2. This is property we've talked about a couple of times in the past, located just south of Legends Liquor, 1812 Sixth Avenue, Southeast. Ken, would you walk us through what this action will entail?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. You may remember, this request came before the board back in March, March 3rd, to be exact. In the meet, or in the 20-day publication process, it's required a plat of the property was inadvertently filed, which changed the legal description of the property. Therefore, in order to file this rezoning of the property, we had to run it back through the planning commission, and it's back before you tonight. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Ward, second Councilman Ronane. So did this hold up the process of developing a parking lot then as a result of this?
We would have continued to work with them regardless of this. It was a snafu on our part. They got the plat in right away, and we went ahead and filed it. But it was a couple, I think it was three or four days too soon.
And they intend to remove that structure that's on the property and just pave it, and it'll turn into a bit of a parking lot for that business?
Yeah, it'll be an expansion of their existing parking lot to the south.
Thank you, Ken. We've got a motion. Second, any further questions from the council? Kathy, would you give us a roll call vote on this one, please?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Folberg.
Aye.
Leebout.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Nostrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Aaron, that's the first time I've heard you in this meeting. What time is it over there?
It's exactly 12 hours different, so it's the next day at 5:44 a.m.
Early rise. All right, good. Next, we've got the one that we had voted to bring forward as an amendment to the, to the agenda here today. It's the possible first reading of ordinance 250502, which petitions to rezone from R1 and C1 property located at Melgarde Road East 502. This is the former Journey Church. Ken, would you walk us through what we're doing here?
Thank you, Mayor. The neighborhood commercial zoning designation will allow the new owners to, for, to allow, excuse me, limited commercial uses conducive to the nature of the adjoining residential neighborhood. Additionally, the C1 designation requires that the planning commission must hold a public hearing to consider and approve any future changes to the property, structures, or land uses before anything may be permitted at this location. On May 20th, the Aberdeen Planning Commission recommended approval of this request to the city council. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve. The motion Ward, second Nostrup. Melanie, I see you back there. Do you have anything to add to any of this, or just take our vote?
No, I look forward to spending money over there.
Perfect. That is good.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Folberg.
I need to recuse myself from this one.
All right. Make that known, if you would, Kathy, please. And since it's an ordinance, each one of us will get our opportunity to make a voice vote, so an abstention from Councilwoman Folberg. Kathy, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nostrup.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Leebout.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries with the abstention. Next, possible approval of permission to install a super graphic in a central business district. It's a building that already has a mural on one side of it. This will be the other from the looks of things. Ken, is this yours, or do you want to talk about that? Ron?
That would be us. As you stated, there is an existing mural that was painted a few years back without going through this process. So when, when they brought this new request for the marine scene on the east side of the building, we also added this on there to gain compliance. These are both for decorative artistic purposes. They don't promote any businesses. Therefore, the Aberdeen Planning Commission reviewed both and recommended approval of each of the super graphics with a stipulation that permits are obtained for each mural and that they are maintained in accordance with city ordinance. Staff recommends approval.
Second.
Motion Nostrup, second Ronane. What is the condition of the one that faces the west? Would you say it's in good condition, great condition?
Yeah, it's, it was recently painted, within the last couple of years. So it's in pretty good condition still.
Yeah, I've seen a few of those things seem like they're flaking pretty good, but...
And the super graphic ordinance allows us to follow up with them down the road and require their repair, so.
Thanks for that clarification. Ken, we've got our motion. We've got our second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Possible approval of purchasing gasoline and diesel fuels for this upcoming season, 2025, 2026, from our state contract. Stu, pretty good pricing we're getting from those?
Yes.
That's good.
It's, we've used this method for the last, oh, many, many years. We find that the state, because of the amount of fuel that they purchase, can get really good prices. So by using their contract, we're getting probably the best, best value that's out there for, for purchasing fuel.
It looks like we've got a couple of vendors who'll be able to
Yep.
make it work, no matter somebody's situation on availability. So we've got, I'd take a motion to approve that, that purchase.
Moved.
Second. Motion Johnson, second Ward. Any questions for... Stu Nelson on that one? If not, Kathy, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nostrup.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Leebout.
Aye.
Folberg.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we've got a possible approval to change the base fare rate from $2 to $3 for our RideLine. Rich, I see you had indicated it had been quite a number of years since that rate has been adjusted. Talk to us about this increase.
Okay. So, thank you. What we're looking to do is get approval from the city council, and then we'll take it to DOT. DOT recommends a fare box of 15%. RideLine has currently been running at about somewheres between 10 and 12%. So what this will do is, I, I put a sheet on your, on your desk here. If you turn over onto the other side, we, we came up with two scenarios, because we were told that, you know, you can expect a decrease in ridership. And, and we were talking with the folks down at Pier, because they did this just a couple of years ago, and they saw a small decrease. So we figured if you go over a few columns, you see a decrease of 16%, a decrease of 8%. We're kind of leaning toward that 8%. But what we're hoping to do with this is just increase our fare box recovery, is what the term is called. You know, and, and part of this process is holding a, a public meeting as well. So upon approval by the city council, I will move forward with this.
And then were the numbers comparable, or roughly the same, or exactly the same in the Pier situation?
Well, no, because Pier has quite a few different scenarios as far as how they figure their fare box. We only operate within two and a half miles of the city. So Pier, you know, they've, they've got quite a different business model, if you will. I don't know if that answered your question. Probably not.
That's what we call a political response. I don't know if I answered it or not, but...
Yeah, I try.
All right. Well, $3 still seems like a pretty good value, especially when it's covering only 15% of our costs involved in the situation. Would someone from the council care to make a motion on this?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion Leebout, second Nostrup. Any questions for Transportation Director Crokel? Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at the fare structure, expecting those will be multiples of $3 instead of $2. Looking at the winter youth, will that be a 50% increase? Because that's just a flat amount.
That would be the same $3 per ride.
Okay. So 330, that's for a seasonal amount, is that right? Do I understand that correctly? 331 ways.
Are you talking about this one on the front?
Yeah.
That's our current, current structure.
Right.
Yes.
So the cash fares will change.
Correct.
Will it cycle down through to the
Yes.
youth programs as well? So that 330 will become 50% higher?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so for like $4.95. Okay, thank you. All right. Any further questions? Kathy, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ronane.
Aye.
Folberg.
Aye.
Leebout.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Nostrup.
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, thanks for joining us, Rich. Appreciate it. Good luck with that. Next is our possible approval of the submission of an application for the water use for the WINS project. Robin, that's been a long time coming. We've been discussing doing that for some time. It looks like the paperwork's all in order. We're ready to go.
We're ready to go. Yeah, we, we have talked about this several times. The unusual part is that the 9,500 is what we can request without really going through a terribly formal process. And by doing it this way, that will secure that $4 million that we've been talking about doing through the, through an agreement with the WINS partners. This would not get us to the full amount. So if in the long-term future, we needed to get more, we would have to go through a more formal process to, to get a larger allocation. But Ron has worked with one of his attorney friends that is an expert in this and helped Ron get us through this point. And I'll let Ron take it from here.
Sure. We have been working with a law firm out of Rapid, Lynn Jackson Schultz. John Frederickson is their water, water expert in that firm. And John has agreed to assist us in this process. I can tell the council that, you know, these are, these are, a lot of preliminary work goes into these, and John has met, I think, twice now with the lead engineer for DANR to review this, has gotten his unofficial stamp of approval. It looks like we're all in good shape, and this can move forward. So we'll be delivering this application tomorrow, I think, maybe tomorrow or, or Thursday, formally to Daner Water Rights. And we would anticipate that that goes through, through a formal process with a hearing. But again, with everything being well in place, we should get the recommendation from the Daner folks. And I wanted to make clear too, the 9,500 acre feet is roughly two and a half times the 4 million gallons that we anticipate getting from WINS in the, in the 20, by the 2030 period. We're just using that. If we were to ever go to a place where the city was 100% Missouri River, we could do another 9,500 acre feet, and that would probably get us very close to what we actually need. So, but as Robin said, to go over 10,000 acre feet is a legislative approval. So us, like other, like other applicants, want to avoid going to that legislative approval. And so we would recommend that the council approve this. And I did attach, as part of the agenda packet, the WINS MOU that identifies that all of the sponsors, WINS, Webb, BDM, and, and the city are required to secure our own water rights for that portion of water that's being allocated to us under the MOU, and hopefully later under a master supply agreement as we move forward on this process. So city staff would recommend that you approve the application. We'll have us $855 fee that accompanies that. But we should know within the next few months whether, should receive optimistically final approval of our, of our future water use permit.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion, Councilwoman Leebout, second Councilman Ward. And they can't be stacked. We couldn't just go get another 9,500.
We can. I agree.
But that would, wouldn't push us to the threshold at which we likely have to have that legislative approval.
Each allocation is its own. So we wouldn't have to stack those and get legislative approval. We could just keep doing that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a clarification from the city attorney. Is that every year that we can do that 9,500? Is that correct? I mean, this gets us, you know, in great position by 2030, but just thinking future forward. It's every year.
I do not profess to be an expert in this area, but I will say that what we're applying here is a future use permit. Once we've obtained a future use permit, then we can start putting the water to beneficial use. Once we actually start using water, then we have to make another application. So these processes play out, play out, play out. They would not approve another 9,500 acre feet allocation next year just because we want it.
Okay.
We do need to show some actual use and need. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great question. Thanks for having the answer at the ready there. Ron, got our motion, got our second. Any further questions from anyone in the council? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. Possible approval. Next is the memorandum of understanding with DSU, Secure SD Cybersecurity Initiative. No Jordan here tonight, none of the tech people. Kathy, do you know a little bit about what's going on here?
Yes, I can present if you'd like.
Please do.
This is a request to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with Dakota State University's Secure SD Cybersecurity Initiative. This program provides a variety of services focused on cybersecurity enhancements and training. It is funded through SB 187, and it enhances cybersecurity for municipalities and counties statewide. With this MOU, there is no direct cost to the city, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Ward, second Leebout. Any questions for Kathy McNichol on this one? And approximately, when do we expect some of this? And approximately, when do we expect some of this, these security initiatives to start to roll out? Do we have a timeline?
I'm not sure on the timeline yet.
Okay. Well, this will get the ball rolling if nothing else. There's nothing further from the council. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose name. Motion carries. Next is the bills that we've got printed in your agenda packet. I would take a motion to pay the bills.
I move to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion Lebo, second Ronane. Kathy, would you give us our final roll call vote of the evening?
Councilmember Nostrup?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Lebo?
Aye.
Folberg?
Aye, accepted Dakota State payment.
Ronane?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman?
Aye, motion carries. Next, city managers report. Robin, what have you got for us?
Well, one of the things we've got, Rich will be our guest speaker at the Chamber Connections meeting for Thursday, correct, Rich? And I believe that's the last one of the year or of this, this spring season and then, then they'll resume again in the fall. But I look forward to hearing everything that Rich has to offer. Lastly, we did have three certificates of appreciation this week or this past week. All in fire ironically. One was Brant Winter, a ten-year. Second one was Lisa Fisher for ten years. And the third one is Jesse Rystrom for his twenty-year certificate. So got some good longstanding employees there and congratulations to all of them.
Thank you, Robin, and thanks to Brant, Lisa, and Jesse for your long tenures here in the city. Appreciate your efforts. Take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Navstrip, second Councilman Ward. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.